We'll start with pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm here. Chris?
Here.
Bailey?
Here.
Jessie?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
Debbie?
Here.
Hannah?
Coming down the hallway.
All right, so that will turn out.
Thanks very much. Glad to be here this evening. And just for introductions, I'm Steve Bailey and the executive director of the Main School Boards Association, but also the Main School Management Association. And part of what Main School Management provides is opportunities for board workshops like this tonight. And both Board Chair Stephanie Euler and Superintendent Grant asked me to prepare information to be able to be shared with you tonight. Do you want to just talk a little bit? I will be using slides, but mostly as a kind of conversation starter. And would be able to present and will be presenting information, but also would like to have this be informal and opportunity for conversation as well in terms of questions as we go. Ashley? Good, how are you?
Good.
Good. So with that, I am going to just kind of go through slides to be able to talk a little bit about what's in your packet, how things are organized, and be able to help you make sense of materials tonight. I do want to just bring attention to the two smaller brochures that are on the left-hand side. One is the tri-fold that you have in front of you, and essentially that's about the Main School Boards Association. And if you open it up, you can see the nine different regions that are organized for the school board association. And you are in Pankas, so you're in Region Two. And I do know that some of you have been attending the regional meetings that are held, because we do have regional meetings four times a year. We send the information out to everybody, and it's really a matter of who can attend, who's available, what night. You're available when your board doesn't meet, your school committee doesn't meet. But we do hold those in September to be able to go over resolutions in preparation for the delegate assembly. And then again, typically in March and May, sometimes we will have another one in January. But there are people within your region. There are three different directors on the Main School Boards Association from Region Two. Mike Williams is a director from Green Bush, Fay Anderson from RSU 22, the Hammond area, and then Nikki Forrester from MSAD 4 in the Guilford area. So if you have questions, if you have things you'd like to make sure that MSBA needs to hear about, you're pleased, you can contact them. Peggy Lembo Splain is the president this year. Jane Osborne is the president-elect, and she'll be elected. Well, actually, she automatically goes into the presidency at the delegate assembly, which is October 21st. So information about MSBA. The other thing I just want to make sure is that you're receiving emails from us probably under two different headings. One would be under MSMA, and actually this afternoon, the MSBA update went out. So it had some information about the Fall Conference, as well as a couple of different articles. I talked also about a campaign that we're doing through many of the associations, mainly those public schools. And so that's also in the campaign itself, in the update. So that's one of the emails. The other email that you probably should receive is from MSMA. And that's where you receive the policy updates, the legal updates, and the law updates that Charlotte Bates typically is the editor for. And we'll send information out for you. So if you're not getting any of those, please let me know. Is anybody getting those in terms of recognizing that you're getting information through those two emails? Okay, that's good, because we want you to be for sure. Then otherwise, in terms of your packet, on the left-hand side is just a copy of the slides. And they're set up so that you can take notes on them if you want, because they're three slides per page. You also can refer back to them after the workshop tonight, should you wish or should you desire. The right-hand side of the packet, we have a number of different handouts for you. We don't go through all of these tonight, and we make them available for your use afterwards as well. But many of them are your own policies, policies that we may put in as sample policies and things to be able to talk about for the various topics that we will cover tonight. So with that, just want to talk a little bit about purpose for tonight. The main purpose being review of main school board statutes, where and how and why you have authority, where you get it from. Roles and responsibilities for school board members. We're saying school board, you're actually a school committee, right? As a municipality, you're a school committee. But school board is kind of a common term that's used for RSUs, MSADs, but municipalities typically go by school committee. Certainly wanted to see what we can do to be able to think and talk about how you can enhance learning as school board members. Yes, for tonight, but also how can that happen throughout the course of the school year as well? Are there other ways that you can learn about that? And one of the things that I would just stop and talk about right now, there are two different things that can happen. One is, and you probably received an email yesterday about the board chair workshop. There's a pre-conference that occurs every year prior to the MSMA Fall Conference. That's Wednesday afternoon, the 25th of October, from 2:30 to 5:00. Typically, we put it that Wednesday afternoon, because if people are coming down and going to the conference as well, then they can stay over if you need to. You need to travel and stay overnight. And then the conference itself, the MSMA Fall Conference for school board members and for superintendents is the 26th and 27th of October. We've got over 60 clinics this year, numbers of them from districts, as well as from some of the professional organizations across the state. And also from two different legal firms, and also from the Department of Education. In addition to that, Bill Daggett is the keynote speaker on Thursday morning. And will be speaking to the topic of Learning 2025, really thinking about what students are going to be needing to be able to be successful learners, you know, both within schools and how education might look different within schools, as well as beyond after they graduate from school. So those are things that will be happening on the 26th, 27th. Again, another terrific way of being able to network with folks, see some topics, some clinics that you'd like to participate in. And at the same time, have the opportunity to extend your learning as a school board member. In addition to that, there are other regional meetings that we talked about. And then from time to time, we do have webinars that we host. Sometimes we will put them on and we'll record them, so if you can't make it the night that it's actually being held, then you can go back and have access to the webinar itself. So the fourth bullet up there is really to establish a strong collective understanding of roles and responsibilities. And so that really is where we're going to begin tonight. But before we do that, I'd like to try to start, because this session's really for you, is to identify, are there things that you'd like to make sure they get talked about tonight in terms of board training? And I know, I understand, in terms of your structure, we have five school committee members here from Herman, one from Lvant, one from Carmel.
Both that and from Lvant.
Both from Lvant, okay, all right, my mistake. So we end up in terms of a different kind of a board, have a one that you've come accustomed to working well in terms of your structure for your high school and your RSU. So or your Herman school district. So with that, are there things you'd like to find out about tonight or have talked about? Are there questions you have you want to make sure that get asked or answered? If not, then we can let it flow. And as they say, in terms of the bottom of that, you know, feel free to ask questions as we get into information. Some of you I know are veteran school board members, so this is going to be a refresh for some. And for others, your experience here will really be of value to those that are newer on the board. First, this is one places that we like to start, because it's really important from the standpoint of both what your responsibility is, as well as who you're responsible to. So in terms of the oath that you all took after you got elected, you went to your town office. And this is, if this wasn't the exact wording, something very much like that. And it basically talks about you faithfully discharge into the best of your abilities, the duties incumbent on you as the school director of. It would be RSU 87, right? Or Herman School Department, according to the Constitution and the laws of the state. We put that up there because really it's the laws of the state and the Constitution that really provide you the authority and responsibility of you being a school board member. A word that's not up there is Herman, or the town of Herman. And while that's vacant and is not indicated as part of it, and we'll talk about that a little bit. Your role as a school committee member comes from laws and comes from the legislation that's been passed by the legislature. So you are the Herman School Department, and you do provide education in the town of Herman and at the high school level for both Carmel, Vant, and for Herman. The responsibility, the authority you get comes through the legislature. So we'll talk about how that feeds into your roles and responsibilities as board members as well. Going on to that next slide, you are the governing body. You make decisions for what happens within your school department. And I do want to make mention, because the second bullet that comes on the slide up here, your duties come from Title 20A, and it's subsection 1001. There are 22 different subsections in there where you get your authority and where you get your duties. But I need to make sure here too, that you understand that the duties are given to the board for the school committee. They're not given to individuals. So you as a school committee, the Herman School Committee, and you, which includes you, the two representatives from 87, are given the authority to be able to make the decisions. It's not decisions that are made by individuals. And we'll speak to that in the next couple of slides that we talked about. But it's very important that you understand that the authority is given to a collective group, it's not given to individuals. So in terms of that, you have a policy that speaks to that. And we'll go to the right-hand side of your packet. It's going to be handout numbers one and number two. Handle number one really is a synthesis or a summary of the legislation that is put forth within the State Law Book. And there are seven different areas that are highlighted here, legislative and policymaking, educational program approval, personnel and employment. And you do have a role in that. You're, and specifically as a school committee, you have one employee, and your one employee is a superintendent. And that's the decision you make collectively to be able to hire, supervise, as well as evaluate the superintendent. In terms of other employment decisions, the superintendent is required by law to bring to you nominations for teachers and nominations for principals. Those are the two pieces within the statute that speaks to that. It's possible, and some districts do do this, where they would bring other personnel to the school committee as well. Sometimes for information, some other times, some other boards also act on those. And I guess I'd ask here, educational support staff, is that brought forward as an FYI, or is that something that the committee actually takes action on? Yes, and like I say, it's determined by school committee what you want to do in that particular case. But by statute, only the principal and teachers need to be brought, you know, by nomination. Now, once the nomination is brought to you, you can approve or disapprove. But if you approve, a third step needs to be taken, and that's for the superintendent to offer the position to the recommended person. It's not always that that third step has to be taken or is taken, because there may be some things that may be found out in between the approval time and when the superintendent actually go to offer the contract, that maybe determine that it's not in the best interest of the district here for that contract to be actually provided, given to and then signed. Yes, Bailey?
So when your superintendent is offering the job to the employee before the board has voted, how do we handle that situation? When the staff already knows that they were hired or have already been told before the board has voted?
So what kind of situation are you talking about?
So if you're hiring a teacher or a principal, and they know before the school committee has even voted on it, that's not?
Are you talking summertime? Are you talking out of town?
Anytime.
Well, typically, they can't be hired until the, well, let me back up a little bit. There are a few school committees, and we don't recommend this, and attorneys wouldn't either. But sometimes in the summertime, I have seen school committees give authority to the superintendent to hire for the school committee, then to approve after the offer has been given to the teacher. Now typically, that happens in the summertime. It happens when everybody else in the school world is trying to hire. And in the shortage situations that we're in, people don't want to be waiting on having determinations either by school committee or if they've got, you know, competing offers, you know, being made, you know, between districts. And so sometimes that contingency is placed there, that the superintendent can go ahead and offer the position that the school committee then would need to come back and approve in order for that person to actually be hired. Because for teachers and for principals, that approval, a nomination has to happen, the approval by the board has to happen. And then the superintendent, you're giving the position, would then occur. So I don't know if that follows into any of those situations that you asked a question about.
Not necessarily. The other question is, is I wonder about the legality of if they're told they get a job, and then the school doesn't, the school board doesn't approve it. What retaliation that may set something?
There isn't any, because they can't, there's no guarantee of the position until they've been approved by the school committee. So even in those situations, the superintendent may say, I have the intent of bringing your name forward, you know, to the school committee. I intend to, you know, hire you for the position, but that's an intent. But it can't happen until the school committee has done the second step, and the third step is the superintendent actually providing the contract. Now, that's going to be delegated to somebody else if the word is to continue to go forward with the process.
But there is a difference in notifying somebody you intend to take their name for versus offering them a contract?
That's correct. That's right.
Or votes on it.
Right. Yeah. And again, well, in your situation here, where it's even for the educational support staff, where you do depend on approval by the board before you offer the contract, you're using the same process there as you would for teachers and for principals.
So if they're already started working and they're receiving income before the board has approved it?
In situations, this is a recommendation I would make, if there are situations where you need to have somebody in place to take a position, my recommendation is that you call a special meeting and to have that action occur so that you've got people that have been gone through the appropriate steps to be able to be working, you know, within the Herman School Committee, within the Herman School Department. Okay? All right. So in terms of, we were still working down the sheet, weren't we? Yes. Okay. After personnel and employment, you have a quasi-judicial role to play also, because there are times where you may need to be the determiner of an appeal or some other type of situation. And I think of mostly teacher dismissal or discharges or student expulsions. Those are places where you are the final determiner of what the situation is going to be. Because of that, we ask you in most situations to try to remain as neutral as you can in those situations so that you don't become biased before you have to actually be the judge and jury on certain situations. So we ask that you not be the lightning rod for, you know, being the advocate for, you know, people that may be looking for you for some support and some help as they try to bring their situation forward. In smaller, in small towns, sometimes that's difficult, because you know everybody, you know family members, you know potentially what the situations are. But you want to try to, as much as possible, remain as objective as you can, because you'll be called upon to make those hard decisions, which are probably some of the most uncomfortable ones that you'll have to face, you know, as a school committee member. Budget and finance, obviously, you have the responsibility of providing the resources for your students and staff to be successful here in your school district. And the same thing is true for facilities. You know, what do your students, what do your staff need to be able to be successful? And then also communicating with the public. So those are things that are listed within the statute, but that are also repeated here. They're followed up by your policy, that's handle number two, your school committee powers and responsibilities. And it's this particular policy, and we do speak about policies, and I know you had a policy committee meeting before this meeting. But as you take a look at this particular policy, you see that your first letter, in terms of your responsibility, is to enact policy. One of the major responsibilities of the board is to be able to monitor, adopt, revise policy as needed for you as the district. The two paragraphs up above that, though, are really, really important, because it speaks about some differentiation that we're going to make between what the school committee's role is and what the superintendent's role is. So that second paragraph, that talks about the school committee concerning itself primarily with broad questions of policy, rather than with administrative details. And that means that you typically, as a school committee, are operating at, you know, 10, 20, 30,000 feet level, rather than, you know, down in the weeds in terms of seeing what actually happens within the school. There's a slide, we may get to it a little bit later, but it really talks about you as a school committee, wanting to make sure that the schools are operated well, as opposed to operating the schools. It's not one of the things that school committees, you know, should get themselves involved with. You hire people to do the job, you hire the superintendent, the superintendent with your approval hires other people to do the work that is deemed necessary to be able to run the school successfully and effectively. So that's very important. The second sentence in that second paragraph, "The application of policies is an administrative task to be performed by the superintendent and his staff, who shall be held responsible for the effective administration and supervision of the entire school district." So as I mentioned before, one of your key roles is to hire, supervise, and evaluate the superintendent. Part of the role of the superintendent is to bring information to you through other people who work for the school department to be able to provide you with reports, to provide you with information, data about how the school district is doing. So that you, as a school committee, can make a determination, are we going in the direction where we want to be going? Are we going in the direction that we said we wanted to be headed? And what are the results that we're seeing to be able to help provide support for our evaluation of how things are going? So you folks really need to be holding the superintendent accountable, and also he's holding the other folks accountable who work for him through the hiring of that. So that's where you, as a school committee, do see that, want to make sure that the school is well-operated. Superintendent is involved in making sure that he's operating the school along with staff that have been hired. So other responsibilities on that handout number two, you see what you have is your roles. Planning for the expansion, improvement, financing, construction, and maintenance of a physical plant. Prescribing the minimum standards needed for the effective operation and improvement of the school system. Requiring the establishment and maintenance of records, accounts, archives, management methods, and procedures incidental to the conduct of school business. Approving the budget, financial reports, audits, major expenditures, and what you need for that budget. Establishing funds necessary for taxes for the operation, support, and maintenance and improvement of the school system. Adopting courses and study. Providing staff and instructional aids. Evaluating educational programs to determine effectiveness. Providing for the dissemination of information relating to the schools necessary for creating a well-informed public. And approving or disapproving personnel nominations. So those are the things really that school committee members need to be involved with. As you identify your agenda items and topics from month to month, as you take a look at your school committee governance calendar over the course of the year, you should recognize, you know, these types of things that are included in terms of month-to-month basis are over the course of the year in terms of the kinds of things that will be brought to you for various actions. Any questions on any of these? Does anything make sense in terms of what you do? It's good, I hope so. Now, I bring this first one up as a policy, just to be able to help see also that the policies really we view as your owner's manual. That really the policies have a foundation of how your school department is run, your school system is run. Most of these, well, I wouldn't say almost, a lot of these are required policies, and they follow statutes that are, that have been passed through the legislature. Others are recommended policies, and you can get both of those through the index policy newsletter that's provided typically around January, February of each year that's sent out to all school committee members. And that would indicate what the required policies are. So again, policies as the owner's manual in terms of how your district is operated, along with the laws of the state. Do you want to talk about this one a little bit? Because as school committee members, you run and you're elected individually. But as soon as you are elected and you take in your oath of office and you start to come to meetings, you should be thinking about, okay, how can we function as a team? Because as I mentioned before, the authority is given to the full school committee, it's not given to individuals. So part of that is, how do you function together as a team to be able to get the work done in the school district? So, you know, part of that is, how do you interact individually with each other? What are the goals of the district? Is there a mission statement, a vision statement, and are you working together to try to achieve that? But what can you do to be able to work together? You have no authority as individuals, even the school board chair has no authority as an individual. The school board chair will act as the spokesperson, you know, for the school committee if need be. Or that responsibility may be delegated to the superintendent in certain times of crisis, or times when fast communication may be needed, you know, for the district. But you as a school committee, and it says board up there, but let me just finish the sentence, then we go through. You as a school committee really want to think about your success as a group is tied to your, or as an individual member, really is tied to your success as a full body. Both in terms of your own view, as well as the view of the public. Yes, Bailey?
Perhaps you'll get there, but so with that being said, you know, the chair doesn't have individual authority, but there's this misperception that they get to know information or have information that the rest of the committee doesn't get to have. And there's a special relationship between the chair and the superintendent that other people on the committee don't get to be privy to certain information. Can you clarify that?
We'll talk a little bit about that. Well, there's nothing by statute that would say anything different than what I've already said, in terms of they all have similar opportunity for information. There is, I'll go to your point, there is a different type of relationship between the superintendent and the school committee chair. Just based on the need for planning, for sharing of information, discussing of information. The superintendent often will use the school committee chair as a sounding board for trial balloon in terms of checking things out. And then having the opportunity to communicate information to the rest of the school committee. So we'll talk a little bit about that as we get into handle number seven. Let's move forward with that a little bit. So I just want to look a little bit in terms of effectiveness, because when you're working together, that no authority except when acting as part of the majority of the board, that work actually happens when you're at an officially called school committee meeting. So with, is seven your number, or is five your number? And how is a quorum determined in terms of the composition of the full board?
The full board is four.
Full board, you mean quorum when you're saying, full board is four?
So the quorum is four.
Okay, so.
Majority.
Right. So every board meeting is seven? Seven is your actual board? Okay, so four would be majority of the board. So in terms of this? So in terms of this particular slide, if you have an officially called meeting, you need four members to actually hold your meeting, right? And four members can determine any type of positive or negative vote based on who's here. If you have less than that, obviously your majority numbers go down. If you have six, I mean, it's still four. If you have five, it's three. But the majority, there has to be a decision made, and then that action is, whatever is taken, is the action that is the will of the board for that particular meeting. So I guess my point in saying that is, number one, it has to be an officially called meeting, and number two, your actions are determined by the majority of those present in voting that particular night. And so again, it speaks to the issue of your actions are together as a team or as a board as opposed to individuals. And even if individuals present may not agree with something that was said or something was determined by the vote, it's still the will of the board in terms of what the majority of that board is. And as board members, we'll get into this a little bit in terms of code of ethics, I'll take a look at that in just a minute. But the intent is that, you know, once a decision has been made, then that's the decision of the board and people necessarily typically support that decision after it's made. And I will have you look forward on handout number eight and look to your letter H down in the sheet that speaks to, I will support a decision graciously once it's been made by the majority of the school committee. So this whole statement, set of statements is your Herman School Department Code of Ethics, which really is, and I'm going to talk about this as your job description, where we talked before about the policies as the operating manual, but this really is more like a job description in terms of how board members, school committee members, you know, view their interactions with each other as well as their opportunity to interact with the public as well as with the staff. So if you do take a look at this in a closer way, you take a look at letter B, "I will at all times think of children first and base my decisions on how they will affect children, their education, and their training." Really important statement for you. D, "I will remember at all times that as an individual, I have no legal authority outside the meetings in the school committee, and I will conduct my relationship with the school staff, the local citizenry, and all media of communications on the basis of this fact." E, "I'll recognize that my responsibility is not to operate the schools, but to see that they are well-operated. I will seek to provide education for all children in the community commensurate with their needs and abilities." We went over H.
I have a question about H, actually.
Go for it.
So if a vote is taken illegally and not in accordance to law, I mean, the defense was stated, well, H is the defense, I need to graciously accept it. Well, I can't accept it if it's not in accordance with law and there's a refusal to correct and adapt the motion and start over.
There is the ability to be able to rescind or to reconsider, reconsider if it's at the same night, and I think it's rescind if it's at a meeting to follow. So Roberts rules does allow, you know, those actions as well if that might necessarily have to happen. So there are situations like that that might occur.
Well, if a vote is completely illegal and done in secret, then you have to start over, so.
I'm not aware or we're not talking about that typically?
Well, I'm asking you another question just because of H and that being the defense, I just want clarity.
I don't know, this would be defense, that would be something if that were a question and that would, if it were raised by the school committee chair and superintendent, you know, to an attorney to find out whether or not the vote, you know, was considered illegal. If it was, then action would need to be taken in terms of how to correct that. But in terms of H, in terms of being your normal means of operating, this is typically how things are done in terms of you work together as a team and recognizing that you're not going to necessarily win every vote, that there are going to be things that you need to understand in terms of how you work together as a team and as a group to be able to, you know, play well in the sandbox and to be able to get things done that are going to support students within the district. So that's one of those things that you really identify, how this can be done, you know, with the group that you have working together. I, as I would go along, I'll not criticize employees publicly, but will make such criticism to the superintendent for investigation and action. Now, if indeed there's a situation and you may have policy KEB, I don't know, but if there are situations where you as school committee members have questions about the superintendent, then you would ask the school committee chair. So I mean, there is a means there for, you know, that type of opportunity as well. But typically, if there's a situation that needs questioned, then you'd go to the superintendent to be able to make that known. J is another important one, "I'll make decisions openly after all facts bearing on a question have been presented and discussed." In that particular case, what we're talking about here is really not having your mind made up before you get to the meeting, that, you know, you have the opportunity to be able to both influence others as well as be influenced by others, you know, when you come to a meeting and you have a topic on the agenda, you've made the motion, the seconds were made, and then you have the opportunity for discussion, conversation, and really to be able to be informed about an issue before you actually can go ahead and take a vote. So again, code of ethics, really important. One of the things that we do recommend is that school committees, you know, take time to actually review these on an annual basis. The value of that is that you just take time to reconsider what it is for your responsibilities to each other as well as to the children, you know, within the school committee, within the school district. Some people do that, some boards do that within the summer where they may take time for a special workshop. Some people call it a retreat, you know, some people just call it a special workshop where they come together to review their mission, their vision, and take a look at, okay, so how did we do as a school district the last year and think about, you know, setting some goals for the next year. And at the same time, reviewing the code of ethics so that people can renew their commitment to each other as you go ahead and continue into the next school year. This is one that I, this is three sets of slides that I wanted to just pay some attention to. And it really speaks to who you represent. In thinking about state law and statute and court cases that have been tried, sometimes when people are elected to a school committee or they're elected to be a selectman or a select person or to the legislature, there's differences in terms of what your role is as a school committee member. And it's difference in terms of the term representative for versus representative of. When you think about being representative of, actually for, people see themselves being elected representatives of a particular constituency. So someone going, being elected to the legislature, they've been elected by a certain district, be it a senator or be it within their representative, they voice only the self-interest and opinions of that constituency because there are people there who are trying to get laws passed based on who elected them. And while they may be listening also to other folks, they're really working on behalf of the constituency's interest. So this would be a representative for. Representative of is really more of a situation where you're listening to all the opinions and the information around you, be it at the Little League field or the grocery store in your neighborhood or other people around town, but you understand what those constituencies are talking about to you, and you're going to be bringing that information to your school committee decisions, and you would be considered there as representative of. You voice the interests and opinions of those you know best and then vote on behalf of the best of the overall interests of the organization. The organization are the students and the school district. It's not necessarily the neighborhood you're elected from. It's not necessarily a vested interest of somebody who has talked to you and said this would be really, really important, you know, for the time. Now, you may agree with them and you may go ahead and voice those, but in terms of your overall action at the end of the day, you should be thinking as a school committee member, which is very different than being elected to another office within the state, thinking about the overall interests of the organization, you know, students as well as the district. So I do want to make that distinction in terms of representative for versus representative of. And as school committee members, you're responsible for, at the high school level, everybody, all students from your three towns, you know, at the pre-K eight level, you know, for Herman, all students in terms of whoever they are, wherever they come from. It's your responsibility to be thinking about them and, you know, what's in the best interest of those particular students. So as we move forward, I do want to talk a little bit too about roles and responsibilities, thinking about the school committee and then superintendent. And you have a policy as handout number five in your right-hand packets that really speaks to a school committee and superintendent relationship. I've talked about the duties that you have deemed upon you by the legislature, there are 22 of them in terms of Title 28. And then by policy, actually in the statute, there's also section 1051 to 1055 that speaks about the duties of the superintendent. So as we take a look at this particular policy, it says in the second paragraph, as we talked before about policymaking being the role of the school committee, "Management of the schools is a function of the superintendent. The school committee holds the superintendent responsible for complying with all the applicable laws." And that paragraph continues. "The school committee collectively and as individual members shall recognize the superintendent as the education leader of the school department, provide direction for the superintendent through written policies, objectives, and so on." And then down at the bottom, well, actually, we'll continue a little bit, "Give the superintendent full administrative authority and support for properly discharging their duties. Hold all school committee meetings in the presence of the superintendent, except as otherwise permitted by law. Refer complaints, criticisms, and requests of the superintendent or other appropriate personnel and discuss them at school committee meetings only after administrative solutions have been exhausted." So that's where I again would ask you not to be the lightning rod for situations that come to. Now, people are going to seek you out because you're a school committee member. They know 24/7 that you're a school committee member, and so they're going to try to request for you to be a good listener, which you should be, as well as to have their particular situation passed along. And in those situations where somebody does speak to you, I'd ask you to share the information with the school committee chair and the superintendent so that they have a heads-up as to what the situation is and they can help plan for what the next step might be with regard to how to deal with that particular issue that might be brought up by a resident or a parent or business member of the community. And then obviously F, evaluate the superintendent, provide appropriate opportunities for the superintendent to share his perceptions regarding the working relationship between the school committee and superintendent. So you've set up through policy something that also was represented by the model and by the slide up above, it's also on your slide number six in terms of your handouts. The board really should be operating on that left-hand side of the slide, thinking about vision, mission, goals, policies. You're not the people that should be intent on trying to do the operation of the school district. You should be concerned with the what, in terms of what is it you want your students to be, do, enact, and be able to perform once they finish eighth grade, once they finish high school. Your questions really are going to be more about the what, the why, and the how much. Yes, Hillary?
That's a good question. What do I do as the chair if an item is brought up that hasn't gone through the E, the appropriate channels within a meeting?
Coming back to this one? What should you do with a complaint that has, that comes to you?
Yeah, come up from a committee member, yeah.
From a committee member here?
Yeah.
I'd talk to the superintendent, I would identify?
In the middle of a meeting.
Yeah, in the middle. Well, we're going to get to that because there shouldn't be surprises that should be coming up in the middle of meetings. Okay, we'll talk a little bit about that as well. But that goes to our communication strategy, which should be number seven. So in terms of the board, you really, in terms of that what, is going to be your role. The superintendent's role is going to be to think about and be concerned about these types of questions, how, when, where, and by who. It's that type of question that he's going to be considering so that he can be able to make a recommendation to you, because he wants to be well-informed to be able to bring a recommendation, be it about transportation, about facilities, about staff, about curriculum, about anything that has to do with what the school committee is going to be making a decision on. That recommendation comes to you, you vote, and then you send it back to the superintendent for implementation. So it's just like the nomination process of principals and teachers and your educational support staff, it's a two-way process of a recommendation and action by the school committee and then implementation back by the superintendent. All of that, and I do highlight the two words at the bottom, because effective school committees do work toward trying to establish trust, trust with each other as well as trust between the school committee as well as the superintendent in order for that to be a seamless operation, you know, within your school department. So as communication improves and as communication stays strong, then more deposits get made into the trust bank. And so you have more to be able to build on in terms of, yes, we're working in the operation in a manner that we want to, and we're seeing the district go in the direction that we want. Sometimes when you get withdrawals made from the trust bank, then you end up with, you know, some questions in terms of, you know, are we going in the direction we want? And do we have the players on the team that really need to be helping move the district forward? So there's definite distinction between roles, the superintendent's going to be involved in the objectives, the action plans, the regulations, procedures, in terms of making sure that the work gets done within the district. Now, part of that does depend greatly on communication. So if we take a look at handout number seven, this is a sample from another district, but it's very clearly established so that a school committee was wanting to find out what information that they could have that would help them be a better school committee together. What is it that they would be able to have individually to be able to help do their jobs together better as a school committee? So I am going to go down through these, both the top part as well as the bottom, because it's equally important for the superintendent to have consistent information from you as a school committee. So first of all, number one, regular timely communication from the superintendent via email regarding the state assessments, programmatic changes, or other matters. Basically, just information coming from the superintendent that would be to everybody. Information that is for your information that you could use to be able to make decisions better at a board meeting. If there has to be, if there is some type of emergency, to be notified via email as soon as possible, and sometime, or maybe by phone or maybe by text, but, you know, in terms of any communication method feasible where you'd be able to get information as soon as possible. And hopefully, that information comes to you ahead of the information going out to the public, because it's important for you as board members to have information should the public come to you. Now, that may not always be possible, but that should be a goal in terms of that being able to happen. This next one, three, "To receive school committee electronic packets with supporting documentation the Friday before the scheduled school committee meeting whenever possible." I don't know, your meetings typically are Tuesdays?
Mondays.
Mondays? When do board packets go out?
Thursday.
Thursday?
Maybe.
So.
That's not enough time.
Thursday to Monday, maybe a short amount of time. Do they go out electronically or paper form?
Electronically.
Because part of this goes down to the number four comment down below, and if you take a look at what the superintendent could expect. Number four for the superintendent, "School committee members will call the superintendent with questions about agenda items or supporting materials at least 12 to 24 hours before the scheduled school committee meeting." The reason that's there, even though this is a sample from some other district, I totally support this, knowing a prior superintendent, knowing how board and school committee members' schedules are, being able to have information in a timely manner to be able to read it, to be able to understand it, to be able to then potentially ask questions about it prior to the meeting, I think is really important. And I would recommend, and I have seen some folks, they send it out seven days ahead. So if the meeting's on a Monday, then the previous Monday... So if the meeting's on a Monday, then the previous Monday is the date that the information goes out. If they need it on a Tuesday, then they try to do it the Tuesday before. Other folks, it may be five days in order to be able to get information up. And the reason is because of that number four. Because the other thing that I would expect you as school committee members to be able to want to do, if you had a question that you would want to seek clarification on, that you would want to have time to be able to read it and have, especially where your meetings are on a Monday, potentially that weekend's not an available time to be able to get clarification on an issue. So, you know, could that go out an additional day or two in advance so that there's more time to be able to have, you potentially read it, understand it, and be able to ask that question? So there aren't the surprise questions that come up, you know, at a board meeting. Number eight above and number seven below, you protect yourselves as board members. When I say protect, I really mean in terms of not being surprised at a board meeting and to look as if you don't, aren't prepared for, you know, what the meeting's about, if indeed those kinds of questions come up, you know, during a meeting. So both to help yourselves as board members as well as to help the superintendent, if there's a question you have either about a material within the packet or a question you have that you think you'd like to have addressed at the board meeting, I urge you to call the board school committee chair, call the superintendent ahead of time so that there's enough time to plan, should that, this be on the agenda, or should this be something that should be moved to a meeting, you know, later on and brought up at another time. But agenda items or agenda or questions that come up that aren't on the agenda, I think really provide an interruption to the planned intentional business that you've planned for that particular meeting. The superintendent and board chair, one of their responsibilities is to help plan for, you know, the important work that you do as your school committee. So in terms of that work, it's really important that you give thought to what's important for that month in terms of where it is over the course of the year. If other questions come up that school committee members raise, then you need to determine, is this something we put on this agenda? Is this something that we don't have as an agenda item because that's going to be your decision also? Or is this something that gets moved out to another meeting? So first of all, I don't know if that helped address your questions, Stephanie?
Yes.
And then Haley, you had a question?
Yes, so a lot of times if there are questions, either one, the information we're just getting the day we get there, some of the information, we're handed information when we sit down that we've never seen before, or we ask for things to be on the agenda and it's been a year and we ask every single month and it's never on there. So if you ask, you have to have that conversation. If you're, if the communication isn't working outside of the board meeting, then you have to have that conversation in public, whether it's uncomfortable or not. It's unbecoming, it is, I admit that. But if it's not working behind the scenes, so to speak, then when else are you supposed to say, hey, I'm trying to address this and nobody's listening?
So I haven't seen, there are two things that I would respond to. One thing, I haven't seen your agenda to see whether or not you have on the agenda a spot that calls for adjustments to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, if there's that particular piece on the agenda, and have you also allowed for items to be added to the agenda at the meeting? Okay.
Not necessarily from board members, only from the superintendent.
Well, there is, if you have adjustments to the agenda, there is the possibility where a school committee member could request an additional item be placed on the agenda. It would be necessary for that to receive a second and then at least a majority, if not two-thirds, action to be able to have that item be placed on the agenda for that night. Now, that said, often those items that are placed like that, unless there's information to be known, seen, or discussed and be able to be discovered or considered, you know, for that evening, it's difficult, you know, without preparation of that particular item to be able to make a decision on that. And so I'm going to go to your point and make another recommendation. If there's information that you feel as if you don't have enough time or you didn't have enough information, that someone on the committee can make the motion to table the item and to be able to have it be considered, you know, at a following meeting. It can be tabled to the next meeting, it can be tabled until, you know, you have additional information to be able to make a decision. So that is a possibility that you can do to be able to consider it if you didn't think you had enough time or information to make a decision. School committee members should feel as if you're informed to be able to make decisions. You're making important decisions in terms of what you have, in terms of the school students as well as all the staff, Stephanie?
Yes, we also have a spot on our agenda at the end for future agenda items every single meeting, so.
Okay, and then I haven't seen, looked at your policy in terms of how agendas, some school committees do have agenda format as well as agenda determination. And so typically, in terms of agenda determination, it's typically the superintendent with the board chair who makes the final determination as to what's on the agenda for that next meeting. And that's part of that planning time that goes into, okay, well, what's your business for the next meeting? And so you'd have to be making the decision, is this something we want to include or not? I don't know in terms of your policy as to whether or not there's a spot for a certain number of school committee members identifying that they, yes, want this on the agenda and therefore it's on versus the superintendent and the school committee chair making that decision.
So, I was going to say, our policy, the superintendent and the chair form the final policy. We do have a policy, I can't remember off the top of my head what it is, that allows for, if an agenda item doesn't get put on, three members of the committee can hold a meeting, can schedule a meeting if the chair doesn't put what they want on the agenda. So another alternative.
That's part of the policy that's...
How would you facilitate the communication not doing it illegally? That's a tricky one. So would you have that conversation in public? So you say, okay, I want to have the bidding, purchasing policy addressed? And, I mean, that's a tricky one.
So what do you mean illegally?
Well, like, what Jesse's saying is if we ask to have something on the agenda and it doesn't get put on there over month after month, how do we facilitate getting three people to have that meeting?
Well, four is your, four is your quorum.
Well, see, that's the thing. Some of our policies say three, some say four, so that in itself is a mess.
And I don't know that in terms of your three and your four.
Yeah, three, thirty-five, majority, and then some other policies say four. It depends, that's why it gets tricky with a high school situation. I sent you an email last fall about their authority and how it works and what they should be voting on or how it works with our quorum. I think our town council's working on it.
Could we take this offline, Micah? Could we look at the previous minutes perhaps that we've all approved to see if there's agenda items that have been mentioned every month that haven't been added?
Sorry, Stephanie.
I said, could we take this offline and could we have Jody perhaps look at previous minutes to see what future agenda items were mentioned every month and weren't brought forward so that we could look at addressing those?
No, I think you're reading minutes from...
That's what I'm saying. And we approve the minutes the next time. So perhaps could she go back through and...
I'll also put any emails and text messages.
But it sounds like there's other vehicles where you make a motion during an agenda adjustment and you get seconded and voted in and things like that.
Right. Here, and again, we either need the majority or two, I think it's two-thirds in order to be able to have that added to the agenda. Continuing down this communication agreement, five, the school committee members, well, no, let's go back up to four. "All school committee members will receive the same information." And this was a point that Haley had raised and asked before. "One member's request for additional information results in all members having the same access to the same information. Communications are done for all school committee members." Now, that doesn't mean necessarily that the superintendent doesn't have a conversation with the school board chair or school committee chair first. Because there are going to be some situations either that he's going to give her a heads-up to saying, you know, look, this is something that I've come to know and this is something that we're going to have to address as a school committee. And so it's determined, okay, what's the information that is, needs to be shared? And then that's sent out to everybody. But everybody should be having that information, you know, at the same time so that it's not something that is held, you know, separately from any particular people. But that is something that will help both increase communication as well as help increase trust in terms of, yes, there's transparency there in terms of what's being shared with all folks. Five, school committee members treat each other and staff with respect. The superintendent's staff will treat all school committee members with respect. And reasonable requests for additional information will be satisfied in a timely manner. That goes down to number four down below as well. Because if you got information, and this is where I do think that the Thursday to Monday timeline might be tight, if the superintendent's getting a request on a Monday afternoon prior to a Monday evening meeting to be able to have more information for you at the school committee meeting, that's not enough time. Depending upon what else is going on in terms of their world of that particular afternoon, more time may be needed to be able to make sure that information is provided to you. And they want to do the best job they can to be able to have you have the information to make an informed decision. So that pairs with making sure that if you have questions, that you ask ahead of time and, you know, 12 to 24 hours is reasonable. I don't think it's reasonable though on Monday, you know, at four o'clock meeting to call on a Sunday afternoon at four o'clock, you know, to be able to try to get that information and expect it, you know, for a Monday night. So your Monday meetings are part of the problem. And then the other problem is just in terms of, you know, the weekend and potentially a short amount of time. So to be informed, I do think that you need the time. Now, the superintendent expecting down at the bottom, well, let me go back to number eight. I did say no surprises. And no surprises again for the superintendent down below. You want to both give the appearance as well as be prepared for being a very functional body and working together, you know, with superintendent and school committee together. You do that when you don't provide hiccups in the road by creating surprises at your meetings. So direction is given at school committee meetings when the majority of the school committee gives direction. Superintendent doesn't work for one person. Superintendent works for the school committee. Whatever the direction, whatever the decision is of the school committee, that's the decision we need and so that's what the superintendent has been asked to do. And so it really takes the majority vote of the board for that to happen. School committee members will be respectful towards staff and be respectful of staff's time. That's the other thing, you know, multiple requests, you know. If you want school work to be done by the district, then you will let them do their work. And so, you know, frequent request of the superintendent or of the business manager or of the director of special services or of the transportation director, you need to allow them to get their work done that you want them to be doing for the school district. School committee members will read all supporting documentation before the school committee meeting. Again, for the purpose of being informed before you have your discussion. We talked about the 12 to 24 hour calling if you have questions. "The school committee as a whole will approve a future agenda item before significant time is expended." Again, that's going back to the issue of the superintendent doesn't work for one individual of the school board. He works for you as a collective whole. "School committee members individually or collectively will not meet with district staff or union leadership or to circumvent the superintendent to engage in an agenda." So that's another important one too, you know, respect where your boundaries are, respect where your guardrails are to be able to do your work as a school committee. So I don't know whether something like this would be effective or not, whether it would be useful. It certainly can be sent as a word document, Micah, you know, in terms of whether you or Stephanie would like to bring this to the school committee to be able to be considered, you know, for a possibility. Any other questions on that one? Okay, we'll move up with those. Review this one just a little bit. A role of the board chair, because a board chair, school committee chair, does have a little bit of a different role than other members. And if the vice chair also is participating in the smooth operation of the district, then they're going to be involved in some of these steps as well. But the board chair, the school committee chair is the planner, the organizer, the spokesperson, also the delegator in terms of assigning committees, appointments to committees. There are also the liaison and confidant. I talk about this in terms of other board members, school committee members, potentially having conversations with the school committee chair who then may share information with the superintendent. You may not have the opportunity to see the superintendent all the time, but if you can share information with the school committee chair, then that person can share with the superintendent as well. Talk about the school committee chair being a guide for new members. Some school committees actually have mentors or they have people that really kind of take new members under their wing and try to help them through that, especially the first year of being a board member. And then also, important and difficult to deal with times, but the caretaker relationships because, you know, a board works together best when you've got folks that both respect each other's relationships as well as participate in a manner that, you know, provides some respect for one another, you know, within and across the board. This is what I talked about before, know your lane. Your responsibility is not to operate the school, but to see that they're well-operated. So that 30,000-foot level in terms of policy, in terms of helping delegate to the superintendent, you know, those roles that are important for him to be able to complete and conduct his job successfully. One of the things that I wanted to talk a little bit about was Robert's Rules. And on your handout number nine, we do have, a handout, it's actually a Robert's Rules placement, the sample code of ethics is on the back, but in terms of Robert's Rules, really, Robert's Rules are used as a guide. You end up with law guiding first and then policy second. And then Robert's Rules really is your guide to be able to continue to help move your meetings along. And so you should have someone that has some semblance of parliamentary procedure, you know, kind of in your back pocket and know if you get caught in certain things, you know, what do you do to be able to make sure that you're going through your motions successfully and sequentially to be able to take the actions that you want to see happen? So this particular motions chart, it does provide, you know, some reasons what you want to do, some of the main motions that are made, and also what level of support is needed. Can it be used to interrupt? Does it need a second? Can it be used to close debate? And what's the vote that's needed? Is it a majority or is it two-thirds? So this, again, is something that may be of help to you. There are different booklets you can get. Jim Slaughter, The Parliamentarian, is a good resource to use if you're looking for something that can be used to be able to be helpful for you in terms of your actual, going through the actual agenda at your meetings. Are there specific questions you might have about Robert's Rules or parliamentary procedure? Okay, good. Then what I'd like to do, and I have talked about this before, the board and superintendent are responsibilities. And I'm going to just go back to this slide again. I don't want to harp on this too much, but again, the superintendent takes action from the whole board. So individual board members or the board as a whole, it's important to allow the superintendent to do the work that they're hired to do and not, well, I'll use the word, micromanage. Because you as board members, you know, shouldn't be in the weeds of doing the work that the administrators have been hired to do. You have roles, certainly policy, and be able to hold the superintendent accountable so that he also then can hold the other folks accountable. But that role that you play is really important, be however often you do, is it monthly? And within the month, you know, beyond that, between that, you know, make plans for what the next meeting is and also make plans for what the plans for the full year can and should be. Another piece that I want... Another piece that I want to talk about is you as a board and attributes that come together effectively for you to be able to work strategically together as a board. There are times when it's really important for you to think and to be able to act strategically and think analytically, being able to express your thoughts together when you're meeting together. And that's important for you to be able to share those reasons that other people may connect with and be able to help make decisions. It's important for you to think about how you can develop and earn respect of group members, of key stakeholders. Now, it could be town council, it could be other citizens, you know, within the community, it could be your staff. But how can you, as a school committee, earn that respect based on the kind of actions that you take and the kinds of discussions you have to support them? Especially thinking about how you can support your students. Working well with others within a collaborative group, you have the responsibility for group decision-making authority. And again, it's that group-making, that decision-making authority. Whether you're demonstrating the understanding of fiduciary responsibilities and duties, you are the group that needs to advocate for what your students need, what your staff needs. So in tough times and tight times and in all times, you will be the ones who will have to develop as well as then communicate what it is you need financially to be able to support the students. And so I say, if not you in terms of being able to advocate for the students, then who would? You've been elected, you know, as school committee members to be able to provide communication about the kinds of things that are going to be needed for your students and staff. Demonstrate the understanding of the difference between oversight and supervision. You provide oversight, superintendent supervises. You supervise the superintendent, superintendent supervises the rest of staff. Earn reputation for emotional maturity, personal integrity and honesty. And then demonstrate familiarity with knowledge of effective board governance. Now, the board governance, we talked about back on handout number one, being concerned with legislative and policymaking, educational programs, personal employment, quasi-judicial budget finance, school facilities, as well as communication with public. Those are the kinds of governance roles that you play as school committee members. Eight effective traits of effective school board, eight traits of effective school boards, that you have high expectations and clear goals, that you believe that all children can learn, that you focus on achievement and you think about and have that achievement, those results reported to you to be able to have you know how the district is doing. Think about collaboration and communication, work on that, know what that means and it looks like. Be data savvy, meaning that you use the information that you get to help you make decisions on what your next steps and what your next goals will be. Make sure that your goals and your resources align. You may have all productive goals in the world that you want, but if you don't have resources to support them, or if your goals are off kilter with what the resources you have to be able to use, then as a district, you're not going to approach the targets that you've set for yourself. Think about how you continue to develop team leadership. And then also that you participate in more events like this where you would consider, you know, some other team training, where you're coming together to be able to work together on certain goals. A book that I've left with Stephanie, it's called How to Become a Better Board Member. It is a book that does describe, either in paragraphs or in some chapters, certain things that might be helpful for the board to consider as a book read or a chapter read and then to come back and talk about how can we work together, you know, as a board and how do we learn together as a board? What are some certain things that may be helpful? And actually schedule some times in that you could use, like tonight, you know, at either a special meeting or part of your regular meeting, and incorporate that as part of a workshop time, to be able to have that time to be able to discuss what's helpful and needed, you know, as board members.
I just have a question, because I love the idea of workshop and open communication and working together, and it really makes the meetings run smoother. It's something that I propose that we do in subcommittees and it's something I propose that we do when there's, you know, because I've attended a lot of your trainings, so if there's something that's controversial and you know what's going to be, you know, with this community or as a board, it's better to get together and work it out, but not in an actual regular meeting. Do you have advice about how to get the committee to understand that workshops are a tool that we're allowed to utilize and use?
Well, just based on your, and I haven't looked at your policy, but my guess is it's going to be set up several to other folks where you do have your regular meetings, you have your special meetings, and your special meetings can also be a workshop, and then you may also have your emergency meetings. Now, emergency meetings typically are identified as, let's say you had a boiler go out or, you know, during the hurricane you had, you know, a part of your roof come off, you know, where you needed to have some fast action on certain things. But the special meetings really can be board workshops, whether it be on budget or whether it be on some other topic that you wanted to have some input from the community on to be able to receive some information that would perhaps inform you as to how you might want to vote on a particular decision that you've got to make on. But it really is dependent upon the board in terms of how you want to use your time. I am suggesting that you potentially, you know, consider, you know, taking some time to be able to continue to work on board development, and that's that last part in terms of training as a team. Another connection to that is a policy that I would recommend that you consider for the board, and this is handout number 22, which is school board self-evaluation, where the school committee itself takes a look at the 16 different categories that are, I think it's 16, 14 different criteria that are on the back of policy, sample policy, BBAB, from board visioning down to M, board legislative involvement advocacy. And then right behind that is a school board self-evaluation sample form where a board can determine how often are these statements happening? And so you actually take this as a self-evaluation, you look at the results, you collate the results, you bring them back for a conversation and say, how are we doing as a board? And use some workshop time to be able to say, are there things that we might consider that we might like to work on? We do these three or four or five things really, really well, but we'd like to pay some attention to other things like monitoring the student achievement or board committee's structure responsibilities and processes or fiscal oversight and resource allocation. There are those kinds of things that an evaluation like this might bring some information back to you. And it goes back to that being data savvy, you know, how can we use information to be able to help you grow and then develop as a board? So that's the way that I might recommend that you consider using some information to be able to help you continue to grow as a board. Yes, Stephanie?
I know we skipped over for time, and that's okay, for the social media guidelines, and I'll probably suggest our potential agenda item if we don't already have one for board member use of social media, I think that's an important one these days. But can we go back to the slide, please, about a word about email?
Sure.
Is what, on the bottom of page seven? So what I'm hearing you say is we really should not be sending emails talking about board items?
Correct.
Outside of the board meeting.
Yeah. Information can be sent by you and by the superintendent with information that would go to all the board, but that would be for an FYI. And it may be something that may be part of a packet agenda item or maybe something that he would want to have you know about prior to coming together for the board meeting. However, that doesn't mean that you should start, or anybody else should start a conversation with a reply, "All," to say, well, this is what I think about item four on the agenda. Because essentially what you're doing is you're conducting business outside of the board meeting. And you only can conduct business when you're legally called together to discuss that information, you know, in an officially, you know, public setting. So the information can go out, but it shouldn't be discussed. It shouldn't be responded to, you know, to be able to have folks identify how you feel on a particular item. It should be something, okay, well, this is something that I'll need to know about. It's important for me to have, and I can use it as part of the conversation when you get back together as a full board and we discuss that particular item on the agenda. Now, the same thing could be true in terms of a question a board member may have. And again, I would recommend that that not be done in terms of, I got a question about such and such, and you blast it out to the full board. Because once somebody starts to respond to that, then you're not in compliance with the Freedom of Access Act.
Well, you are, because it's follow-worthy.
You're not.
It's follow-worthy, the emails are follow-worthy.
Well, that's what number two says, basically, anything you do as part of your board business is potential public record and therefore would be a followable communication. And so therefore, you'd have to turn it over, the school committee would have to turn it over, superintendent would have to turn it over if a certain request were made in that particular way. And again, you don't want, if that was followable and it was retrieved and it was determined that you were conducting business, you know, outside of a publicly called meeting, then there's a violation fine that you potentially would have to pay, as well as potentially be recognized that you're not doing business the way the Freedom of Access Act, you know, asks you to do business as a public entity.
So FYIs to everyone is okay, but not communicating? So if you're sending a statement to all so they're all informed, so they can be well-informed before a meeting, is okay?
Yes, it is. And say, this is FYI, please do not respond. And sometimes that information can be given on a VCC versus on a, you know, regular address in terms of your top line, you know, so that it goes individually to everybody and then people don't necessarily see who the other VCC is. And so if you were to go to reply, you'd just be replying to the person sending it to you and not the person, the other people on the full email.
And you're saying FYI is okay for any board member, or is it typically?
Typically from the chair and from the superintendent. And I do that because, again, the superintendent, if a board member has a question, I would ask them to ask the chair and the superintendent and then have the chair or the superintendent ask that of the other people. Because what you don't want to do is start to have that level of conversation and communication outside the board meeting beforehand. And if that question is sent to the board chair and to the superintendent, then they can formulate a strategy in terms of, okay, how can we get this discussed? You know, what's the manner in which we can have this information and be determined?
Sorry, so with that, then having meetings before the meetings that don't have all the board members is frowned upon to make decisions?
Not by the chair or the superintendent. That happens routinely, and that's expected in terms of the superintendent and the board chair meeting together to be able to plan the meeting, that's expected.
With the chair, but no others, yeah?
The chair, sometimes vice chair, depends on how the committees operate. That's the purpose, if we go back to the roles of the chair, that's one of the main reasons, is to be able to have, I typically always met with the board chair and for, in planning my meeting, a week ahead of time to be able to identify what's going to be on the agenda. Matter of fact, your policy would say that in terms of the superintendent with participation from the chair, you know, will determine the agenda. So that's how that happens. Did that cover that one?
That's what I heard.
Yeah, okay. The other thing that I would say is please be cautious about including any type of student names, student initials, staff name initials, you know, any of your subject lines or any of your communications. You want to protect the privacy of your staff and of your students. And so, you know, be very cautious, but if you have something that important to discuss, give them the telephone and call and talk with the board chair, the superintendent, or go see them personally, so you have the information in person as opposed to, you know, providing that through an email or a text. Because when you talk about social media, Stephanie, it's not just email, it's texting, it's Twitter, it's, you know, Instagram, it's any of the social media platforms that could be followable just as easily as email.
I should know that as well. So if we've gotten follow requests or communication that we've had as a board through social media and then that documentation, I've tried to provide to be compliant with follow requests and it wasn't, nobody would answer my emails, how do I comply in making sure that you have this information for the follow requests? Do you have advice about how to handle that? What do I do with the information if I know that this was follow requested, but I'm reaching out to the superintendent and the chair to say, I need to give you this information?
Was it requested by?
Through a follow request, through a citizen.
Through a citizen. And?
So if they follow request and say, have you had this communication?
Was it of you as well as all other school committee members?
Yes, it was sent to all the school. So then I said to the chair and superintendent, I have information, where do I have to do or where do I send this to be compliant? And it was over three different months, I think it was, that I've sent at least two emails to say, what do I need to do? And no one replies. So I know it's a non-compliance.
I would ask, I mean, that's a situation where superintendent and school committee chair need to reply. The strategy, once a follow request is received, a strategy needs to be crafted by the information access officer, who in most cases is superintendent, you know, to be able to identify where and how that information will be collected to be able to then be provided to the person who's made the request.
Should we utilize sending it to the ombudsman so they have it and they can utilize it and say, this was a follow request because the process isn't working now?
No. Over time, that may. Yeah. Yeah. I think the ombudsman is being innovated with information. Other questions about this one?
Okay.
Other questions in general?
Yeah, so I had asked you about the, why you won't share the password for the policy database, and that's the first on the charge of duties for the law of where assigned. And that was something in your training that I thoroughly enjoyed last year down in Augusta. Can you better explain why you are choosing to alienate other board members who are paying dues?
Talk about that. I would say that you individually are not paying dues. The school board is paying dues.
Right.
So it's the school board who is the member of MSBA, it's not individuals who are members of MSBA.
So we're all board members, so we all should have equal access according to your, I sent you the information.
No, the board, and this is information that we also made available to the superintendent and the board chair, that the board, the board is the member, and so the board chair and superintendent do receive that policy password. In part, that is to protect the integrity of the database. And so the board chair as well as the superintendent have the information, and so whether it's given to the policy committee chair or how it's shared within the board, that's a decision that's made at this level. It's not something that we share to everybody.
But it says in here that we'll have equal access and we're all board members. So I want to understand why it is that I've had it until July, you guys changed the password, and you are now withholding it from all elected board members? The dues are paid by, for all board members have equal access.
That's the statement that we've had, and I was in there before, and whether we made it available before, I don't know why in terms of that particular training everybody received it, whether that was a policy night and it may have gone over by.
It was you at the convention, it was you and I sitting at a convention, a room, a room, a hundred people.
It's available to your school committee and the information is available to your school committee. And how they share that is your decision as a school committee.
Thank you.
So they're allowed to withhold the information?
This is provided in that statement that I sent you and that also sent to Stephanie.
So if our duty is to serve the community and to bring policies forward that will help our school, why would we want to encourage the chair to not allow the board to fulfill their duties to bring policy forward?
What duties are we not able to fulfill?
Any policy that we or anyone wants to bring forward or look at.
What do we want to bring forward? I'm happy that we can discuss it as a board and we can log in and we can get it.
How would I know if I don't have access to the database? There's no reason to withhold it. Why must you do that?
What policies are we looking for?
I just explained to you, any policy.
But we as a board, so we can look at it together.
I know that we should all look at it together.
We're not going to continue to discuss this, we've already talked about it.
We're discussing it because you
We're discussing it because you are choosing to withhold information to the entire board or to one board member.
No, not to one board member, it's just Micah and I that have access to it, we haven't even provided it to them yet.
She has her own school board out in Tarmo. So I'm trying to understand why, what do you gain by withholding?
We were given the recommendation that this password is to be shared.
So it's a recommendation, so we find. It, see, you're saying recommendation, he's saying you have the authority, you said he would give it, he's not. I'm asking you, why would you want to withhold that information? And if we are withholding it, then we shouldn't be paying them because we're not equally getting the representation.
The representation is given to the board.
Right. We're the board, all of us.
Not individually.
All together, we're the board.
Together, you meet together as a board.
So we all get to have the same information.
What is it that you want to research on your own? We're happy to be able to get it to you.
It doesn't sound that way, it's something we want to withhold it.
I'll get you the information that you want to be able to.
How will I know if I don't have access to the database, to know what's there? It's an unproductive.
I'm not going to discuss item further.
It's unproductive and toxic.
Do we have anything that we want to do, we want to open it up to public comment?
Well, you have to, it's a workshop.
Okay. Thank you. Would you like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we open it up to public comment for questions.
Stephanie?
All those okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
What if the questions open? They can filter them from the safe board here.
Yep, so we'd like to now open it up to public comment, this is, can somebody please clarify this? This is the opportunity for members of the public to comment on agenda items, contribute information that may be of interest to the school committee or ask clarifying questions. Please wait to be recognized and identify yourselves before speaking. This is not the time to register complaints or promote a personal agenda. Please remember that you may not identify any person by name or job function, so, and for.
There was just said in this discussion here that the chair has no additional authority, but we just heard that you do have additional authority, so I'm just trying, maybe you can add a little more to that. I guess there is a place where the chair has additional authority. Where here, we just learned that the board operates all on its own, there are some peripheral things that the chair gets to do, some housekeeping stuff, but as far as the authority, I thought we just heard that the chair doesn't have any authority. And so either the chair has additional authority contrary to what Mr. Bailey just said, or somebody's not following through on what Mr. Bailey just said. So maybe you could offer just a little input on that or not.
Thank you. Next up is Danielle Aaron.
I was curious, Mr. Bailey mentioned our usual structure with the two additional people from our community, so the committee, and I was just curious if other towns have that structure, maybe ask the main school board association, if other towns have that structure? And just curious what their town, so we could look at their town charters, maybe, just out of curiosity. And then I'm curious, I didn't hear this said tonight, where do lawsuits fall? Are they under the authority of the school committee or are they under the authority of the superintendent? Does the school committee have to vote before a lawsuit can be acted upon? And is it in line with state law to vote by secret ballot? Is that allowed by state law or not? Is another question I was curious about. And lastly, does the, not that I need it, but we've listened to both the policy a couple of times and I'm just curious, do they have a master list of all policies that are listed? I know Haley's been saying that she doesn't know what to ask for because she doesn't know what's in there. Is there a master list that could be provided to the whole committee, maybe as a compromise? I don't think it's ideal personally, I think everybody on the council, I mean, on the committee should have the ability to access the database, but in the absence of allowing that for some reason, could a list be provided? Thank you.
All right. Next up, Regina Leonard.
I thought we said this was a workshop so that you could maybe have conversation. The word I've heard over and over and over today is communication and respect. So that's your two problems right there, they have been the problem from the get-go. The lack of communication, the lack of respect to each other. Stephanie is chair with her condescending passive aggressive questions back at Haley and you're not answering her question. So there is no reason whatsoever, if you're going to be respectful and have communication and be transparent and you all can work together to all have the same information, not for you to have it over here and say, well, I don't, you have the authority apparently, or do you? Because we're all confused about that, to hand that password over. So to do the right thing and to hand it over. But just to be passive aggressive about it and hang on to it, it's just creating more trouble, like it could just be solved. Here it ends done. One of the best things I saw tonight that I would like to see you all do, which I've talked about, is I love when we have workshops at town meetings and we all can talk and communicate. And there's feedback from the townspeople and the taxpayers and I would like to see what you mentioned tonight with the eval and the walk workshops. That should be like number one on Monday, let's put it on the agenda and let's talk about that and start implementing that. Because again, that's going to create more open communication, was the word of the night, and then that's going to gain respect amongst each of you and maybe from us to you, which would help to solve and to close this ridiculous gap in this fight that we continue to have. So.
That's it. Thank you. Thank you so much. Next up, Teri Ham.
It's been very obvious from sitting in the audience seats that some members of the school committee speak and regard other members with disdain, respect and rumors. Everyone here wants what is best for the students in our district, even though disagreements happen, it's no reason that someone should, someone with whom you disagree should be, you should be, have a disrespectful demeanor and tone of voice. You are all elected by the people of this community to represent us. Please use manners and demeanor that you would like to have used, I guess, with you when being spoken to yourself.
Thank you so much. We will close public comment. Can we give a motion to adjourn?
Absolutely.
All votes are fair? Thanks.
Michael, we have the ability to order a copy of this, one or two, right? When's that? Operator Ted or something?
I was like, what?
I think it is, I think what it's.
Operator Ted? I couldn't tell what it was.